Good morning, I would like to welcome you to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM, Monday, August 15, 2011. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda. Motion by Mr. Stamey, and second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The first item on the agenda is under Social Services. We have a resolution requesting approval of the Aging Subgrant Contract with the Atlanta Regional Commission for Fiscal Year 2011-2012. Our presenter is Susan Craig, Senior Services Director, and that's exhibit number one. Good morning.
Good morning. This is our annual aging contract with A R C for the fiscal year 2011-2012. And under this, we will receive $614,678. And I'm seeking approval for the chairman to execute the documents for us to be able to accept this.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? Mr. Alata?
What was the, how does this compare to last year? Especially with the economy and everything, state budget, where it's at? How does this compare to last year?
It's down probably 10%, which was anticipated from the original contract last year.
In our share? The match or share? Local share? Is that up or down or about the same?
It's comparable.
Comes down with it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, you have before you a resolution authorizing the chairman to execute the contract, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
The next item is a resolution requesting authorization to prepare, submit, and execute the C S B G application for fiscal year 2011-2012, exhibit number two.
Okay, this is our annual contract allowing us to apply for the amount that's allocated to us by the state government, which includes federal funds. And our allotment this year is $115,074. And that is down a couple of thousand from last year.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution, and I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Moving on to Public Safety, we have a resolution requesting authorization to renew the System Maintenance Agreement with Harris Corporation for maintenance on the Emergency Communications Radio System. Our presenter is Don Ash, Director of Emergency Communication, exhibit number three. Good morning.
Good morning. This is the annual contract for the system maintenance and recurring cost of repairs for our communications, Public Safety Radio System. It's with Harris. Harris is the sole provider of the service. They are the one that installed the system. I'll make a note that we recently did an upgrade to our system, so at some point, we will, some of our equipment will fall under warranty, so we should have some cost reductions.
Does any board member have a question or comment? Mr. Holder?
Just quickly, that is a substantial amount of money for maintenance, obviously. $536,000 a year. And as you said, it is sole source. That's forty-five, forty-four, forty-five thousand dollars a month just to maintain that system. And the funding for that comes from the 911 fees, is that not correct?
The radio system comes from general fund, but the, Mr. Holder, the service agreement covers just not our equipment. It covers every mobile, portable, all the tower sites, every piece of equipment on the radio system.
Right, I understand that. Still, a lot of money. And there's no one else that you can't even do?
Currently, in the state of Georgia, Harris is the provider, and the local shop is Loudon, and they're actually out of Douglasville.
Loudon Communications.
Loudon Communications.
Yeah, and I understand that. But that, that gets to the point of extremely expensive.
Absolutely.
It's something we have to do, I understand that.
I, I think, Mr. Holder, as systems, Harris now has systems in Henry County, Spalding County, and Newton County. They just recently acquired a system in Rome. So probably within the next year, as they expand, there should be a second vendor that comes in that can provide that service. Currently, they have Harris here, and I think the next closest shop is probably down in Florida that provides the, the system maintenance for the Harris system.
I would just encourage, if there's any way that this could be looked into, that somewhere, when there's no competition.
Absolutely.
And there's no, no restraints, then, then people.
I think one of the things.
I'm not saying that's the case here, but people have a tendency to charge what the public will bear. And that's just, over a half million dollars a year is significant, especially in our budgets today.
Absolutely. And additionally, one of the things we have talked about, the county manager and Mike, the finance director, we've actually looked at, at some point, and we did it in our new building facility, that we may be able to train and bring someone on board to take care of the installs, the recurring radio repairs to mobiles and portables, which is a large chunk of that money, and we'll do that in-house. So we've actually looked at that as something to do in the future.
Please, continue to do some research. We need to get that number down.
Absolutely.
Are there any other questions, Mr. Alata?
Don, on the contract itself, it appears for the appendix that the previous contract was 551, is that correct?
That's correct.
And this one's down, but I do notice there are two components, and the backbone, and then the terminals. And the backbone, in the higher, last year, was 254, and this year, it's gone up to 274. And you said we have new equipment. Why would that portion go up?
It went up because of what they're covering for the equipment. The new equipment, which we purchased, we haven't installed. And once we do the install on that equipment, the warranty period should begin on that equipment, and they will go back and prorate the contract to cover those costs, and delete the costs that are not affected by that.
Any, any idea how much that might be?
Not until we get the equipment online, sir.
Because, as I said, it's up $20,000, so with new equipment, you would hope that it would go lower than last year's, which is at least a $20,000.
Absolutely, I think we will see some cost savings in the, when the new equipment goes online.
Okay, I'm looking for at least 20-plus based on that, okay.
Any other questions? If not, you have before you a resolution approving the renewal of the Harris Radio System Maintenance Agreement in the amount of $536,455.86, and I will entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Alata, there's second. Second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Moving on to S P L O S, we have a resolution requesting award of a request for proposals for the design-build services for park improvements at J. P. Mosley Park. Our presenter is Ron Burkhalter, Capital Projects Director, exhibit number four. Good morning.
Morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Proposals were solicited to furnish design-build services for park improvements to include one new restroom facility, two new pavilions, and two new playgrounds at the J. P. Mosley Park in Stockbridge. Five separate vendors submitted various proposals. Each vendor was brought in for an in-depth interview and review of their proposed options. All proposals were thoroughly reviewed and rated. The R F P stipulated that the budget for this project was not to exceed $250,000. Each proposal was rated on the following point system. Playground design and warranty was a 60 points possible. Restroom pavilion design, 30 points possible. Total completion time, 10 points possible. S D R restoration and construction of McDonough, option 2B, earned the highest rating of 99 points. A proposal point summary and all evaluation forms are attached in Attachment A. Awarding of the R F P was based on a point system as determined by the evaluation team. Funding for this is available in the S P L O S III, J. P. Mosley Park Project. Staff recommends the highest rated proposal of S D R restoration and construction in the amount of $249,370.
Does any board member have a question? Mr. Bowman?
I have more of a comment. Basically, we did not, you know, in reviewing this, of course, you and I spoke earlier, so I was well aware that we had a large swing, I guess you would say, in the different bid proposals that were submitted, but some of the proposals were not for the same amount of equipment. Is that, isn't that correct?
That is correct, Commissioner.
It was a difference in, in some cases, it was 19 play activities as opposed to 14, as opposed to 12, and we, I think it's important that you give a, just a brief synopsis on what, you know, what these prices actually represented, not in equipment or anything, but the fact that, that we've got a two to five, I believe, is one area for kids two to five, and the other areas, five and older. There's, there's certain equipment, I was able, Madam Chair, I was able to actually look at, at several of the proposals, and, and the equipment, and the warranties, and some of the other things on them, and I, I just feel like it's important that we talk about the fact that we are choosing something that not solely based on price, but based on warranties, based on how many pieces of equipment, because if you add the other pieces of playground equipment, that price could very well be back up to the other prices, so. If you would just kind of provide a little brief synopsis on how you, we did that.
Commissioner, on the, the low bid, and again, in Attachment A, and the evaluation forms, without going through all of them, we went through and we broke down all the parts and the pieces, like you had explained there. In the five to 12 play area, there's, in the, again, in the option 2B, there's 19 elevated play activities, there's 12 ground-level activities, six swings, and the two to five, there's 11 elevated play activities and seven ground-level activities, two sets of swings. Also included in 2B was an addition of six metal, plastic-coated picnic tables, three shaded park benches. When I say shaded, the, the park benches with the, that are covered, that will have a covering, okay, to keep you out of the sun. And option 2B also had an additional spring rider that was added to their bid. They also included five trash receptacles, which again, are the metal trash receptacles with the tops and the, the plastic coated.
Well, I think that was, you know, that's important to recognize, that we did have that, so. And I really don't know, I mean, I, I, even in my business, I've never dealt with playgrounds, so it's something different for me, but this is a, this is kind of a package deal of park improvements where we're trying to, where at the end of the day, we're going to end up with additional park and restroom facilities right there at the, right there at the playground area, as well as a walk-in track within, walking track without, stairs and stuff to get down from the rec center that would be located adjacent to the playground area, so there's, it's a, it's a pretty good-sized improvement, and I know that, for the record, I just want to say, you know, these, these things were, were voted on as part of S P L O S III and part of II, where we picked up, each commission district picked up additional funds from that in order to do these, so. Several have asked me and stated that, you know, we probably need this money someplace else, but legally, we can't move it anywhere. And, you know, it, it was voted on by the voters, it's supposed to be in capital improvements, it's supposed to be, it was designated for that park, so I just want to be sure that we understand that that's what we're doing, and it'll be a state-of-the-art facility, it'll be something for a lot of families that can enjoy this, as well as the sports activities that are going on within that area, so.
Mr. Alata?
Oh, Mr. Commissioner Bowman, if I, just take this, for example, option one and the one that you're proposing, 2B. It appeared that, by reading this, that the difference is that there's three shaded park benches, more, and four picnic tables. Is that the difference between those two, or am I missing something?
That's, that's correct.
And what would a picnic table run? I mean, I have no idea what that or a shaded park bench. I take it between those additions, you're looking at at least $14,000 more if we bought them individually?
Yes, when you go with the, the metal-plastic coated, as opposed to just your wooden benches or, or your, just your standard metal benches, plus the, the covered benches also, okay, the structures for the covered benches.
It's basically a canopy that covers that bench, and I've seen that, was it at, where do we have those at? Because I've seen them at one of the other parks.
North Mount Carmel has the cover.
And that's the ones that are utilized by the ladies, and, you know, they may have a little baby or something with them. We're also putting two very large pavilions out there, so that those pavilions can be, you know, rented from our parks and rec for family events and for other things, and I understand that most of them, and I see Tim's in the, in the audience today, but I understand that most of them stay rented a pretty good while, and I would assume these would rent rather quickly, because they're going to be very nice, so.
These particular pavilions are 20-foot by 40-foot each?
Just taking the two bids that I was talking about, both of them have the same, except one was wood, it's all like stick-built, and the other is pre-engineered.
Correct.
So, again, but that, I was just trying to get to just an example of where the, just taking the one that's $14,000 less, and there are parts and pieces, as you said, just taking specifically, as Commissioner Bowman was mentioning, trying to find a difference there, so.
Anyone else with a question or comment? All right, if not, we have a resolution before us awarding the bid to S D R restoration and construction in the amount of $249,370, and Mr. Bowman, I'll look to you for a motion.
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
Have a motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
One other comment before Ron leaves. Completion?
60 days.
60 days from, from his getting all of his paperwork in?
Yes, sir. And, yes, sir, and this, this particular job was a design-build, okay, so with the approval from the board this morning, we're going to turn the contractor loose so he can get his design on the, the pavilions, submit it to the county, okay, for permitting, which, talking with the contractor, that's not a big issue. So the construction time from the notice to proceed, and we'll give the notice to proceed, is 60 days of completion.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Moving on to Public Works, we have a resolution requesting award of a bid for groundwater-methane-gas monitoring services. Our presenter is Terry McMichael, Public Works Division Director, exhibit number five. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Board Members. Monitoring and reporting services are necessary to manage groundwater and surface water collection, testing, and reporting. The same services are also required for methane gas well monitoring to be performed at two locations, at the Henry County West Asbury Road Phase Two Municipal Solid Waste Landfill and the Henry County Old Wendy Hill. This request was bid through the purchasing department. We had 15 vendors submit for this contract. A copy of that is attached for your comparison. We have looked over those bids, we called some of the people that, that they work for, and we recommend the overall lowest and most responsive bidder was Advanced Environmental Management in the total amount of $22,150.
Terry, are any of these funds reimbursable from the Hazardous Waste Trust Fund? I know we received some funding from them a couple of weeks ago, and I didn't know if this fell under something that that money could be used for.
May have to get Mike to help me on this, but I'm pretty sure they don't pay for the monitoring. If you make improvements like the, the VAC system or something like that, is that?
Yeah, that's correct. We were recently reimbursed for the sole vapor-extraction system, which was a separate system beyond just the normal day-to-day, month-to-month maintenance that's required, so this is typically just an expense that the county incurs, but for those major expenses, those are reimbursable.
Okay, thank you. Does any other board member have a question? Mr. Alata?
Terry, I think it's great that we've got a bid this low compared to the others, but it also, for me, raises a little concern when I see the lowest bid at 22,000, and the next lowest, 31, almost a 40 percent, over 40 percent increase, going all the way up to 96,000. Can you explain, or is there any, is there something? We've had some contracts recently, in a short time, I've been on the board here, where we've awarded them, come back later and found that they couldn't do the job, and there's been, not necessarily maybe in your department, but there's been some in my short time here. And when I see this, 40 percent higher, and then going all the way up to 96,000, it makes me have some real concern that we're missing something. Or, again, I don't know the players that you have involved in this, but just to raise the issue if nothing else.
Well, it was a little bit of a concern of mine when we got these as well. The, about midway down the list is a provider that we have been using for a while. Actually, the, the second bidder was one that is doing some work currently for us. So the first one was one that we have not had any experience with. Because of that, I asked Michael Tony to call three or four of the vendors that, or call three or four of the other companies that they have worked for, and they, matter of fact, I believe one of the vendors was Butts County, just south of us, and they have worked there and, and doing their reporting, monitoring, and everything's well, but we ended up checking about three or four of their references, just to make sure how long they've been doing it, and were they doing the job they were supposed to do. And everything we received said that they do a good job and are quite capable, and deliver their reports and their monitoring on time. So under that, we were, we were comfortable enough recommending them.
How do we know that they're doing the job correctly? I mean, we're contracting them to measure something or do something, that, how do we go behind them to make sure that they're actually doing what it is, as opposed to shortcutting the job versus maybe some of the other people seeing that there was more to it? Understand, there's got to be some reports that we're getting for this money, and how do we know they're doing it and have done it correctly? And many people that gave references, if they're just saying they gave us a report, I, again, I don't know enough about the subject, other than just hopefully some common sense questions that I'm trying to answer the raise here.
We, methane monitoring and the groundwater monitoring is a little bit complicated, isn't it like something that me or one of my staff members can go behind and do that same report and tell if they did it right? I don't have the kind of equipment that, that they need to do that, or we'd probably be doing it in-house already as well, but these reports are submitted to E P D. Some of them are quarterly, some of them are biannually, so if those things are not right, I'm sure we'll be hearing from E P D. Now, what we will do in our office, as these things come in, we'll look at those numbers, and we have a history of each of those well locations and what they've been doing. Obviously, if there's something very dramatic change in something, that we'd be looking at it, but as far as verifying that they're doing their results, again, it's kind of, this is a professional service, these people are licensed, they have to be a licensed engineer or a geologist, certain qualifications to do that, so we hope that them being professional people, that they would do the work they're supposed to do.
Then along that lines, just to protect us, and, just in time, I'm going to ask our county attorney here, does the contractor, or the whatever we're entering into, at least make sure that if it is not right, as you said, that we're protected by the contract, that they would suffer the liability? There are some clauses that we can go back against them if E P D does come back and say that the studies they've done are incomplete or inaccurate, or whatever the case may be?
I'm not sure that's in there.
Yeah, I don't know. What we can do is, if the board is inclined to approve this today, we can have it subject to review and approval by my office, and if the terms, to make certain that those terms are included. If that's okay, Terry.
I just think, again, you can't monitor, as you said, you don't have the equipment going back up, but again, if we're doing this for E P D, and the E P D comes back and says, you know, they didn't do the complete job or inaccurate, at least we're protected, they've got to go back without coming back and saying, well, phase two cost you X, or we got to go back, that wasn't what we contracted, or something, that's, I'm just looking to protect the county from the standpoint of liability.
We always have the options, if, if they don't perform, to end the contract. And I'm sure there's language in here that if they inadequately or poorly perform, that we have the right to end the contract. I know we have a right in here to renew, and I'm sure if they don't perform as they should, we can end. Now, that doesn't mean that you go back, but I would, you know, I can't predict to you what E P D does, but I can, I know in working with them in the past, that when things happen, and I know one time, we didn't get a report the exact week that we're supposed to, we called them up, and we said we had to do some repair to a well before we could get that reading, we repaired the well, we sent it to them. As long as you talk to them and explain that thing, they're very, they will work with you, so.
Again, I'm not, I'm just trying to protect the county, that the 22,000 gets us what we need and doesn't put us in a position to terminate the contract, and then go to number two and spend 33,000, and have whatever fines or whatever that may come without having the reports that were due at that time. I'm just, there's no reason the contract can't specify some type of damages that protect us, that they got to complete the job and do what they're, they're contracted to do, that's all.
Dan, let me interject something.
The county attorney's nodding in agreement to that.
We can draft, we can draft something, Terry, that will be consistent with, with the R F P that was sent out, and the expectations and protections that Commissioner Alata is referring to.
I do have one time limit that I am under on this contract, if we could still do this. What we have done in the past, we had monitoring going on at Wendy Hill, we had monitoring going on at West Asbury, they were two different companies, two different times. It was in bits and pieces. This puts it all together and makes it where, when they come up, we actually had a service going on at Wendy Hill, and then we had a, the same service going on at West Asbury. I would think that if you come out and you have a day's work to do, it'd be a lot more advantageous to have it all at once. So that's what we did. The current, what we're currently spending today, if you added up what we were doing at Wendy Hill with that consultant, and a different consultant on West Asbury, was somewhere around over 35,000. In putting this together, we have reports that need to be done starting in August, so I don't know if we can do that. If we have to rebid it, I'm going to have some.
Rebid, I'm taking whatever the R F Ps are, and making sure within that contract and whatever states, whatever we can at this point, to get those security, secure feelings of, and again, county attorney can go ahead and put that together with you.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. Holder?
Terry, two questions. Who is the current provider for the service, and what, what price are we under currently? I mean, what, what is the amount of their contract?
Warren, they were, I didn't bring it with me this morning, I can tell you who they are. T T L was doing part of it, and I believe the number-two bidder, Geotechnical and Environmental Consultants, I believe, was the other vendor. I just, I just know when we were doing that, one of these consultants was up from Valdosta, and, you know, the cost of coming all the way up here and, and doing a section of the work and then going back.
But is it significantly lower than, the proposal, is it significantly lower than what we are currently paying, or?
Significantly, yes, sir. I, I think before, the combination of the two vendors, or two consultants we were using, I believe, was somewhere in the neighborhood of between 35 and 40,000 dollars total.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, you have before you a resolution awarding the bid to Advanced Environmental Management Incorporated in the amount of $22,150, with the resolution to also have the language inserted with the contract, subject to review and approval by the county manager, by the county attorney. And with that being said, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the judicial system, the first item is a resolution recognizing a name change and designation change for the Henry County Probate Resource Court. Our presenter is Kelly Bel Castro, Court Financial Administrator, exhibit number six. Good morning.
Good morning. We changed our probate resource court originally was with a judge that was under probate court, and with this fiscal year budget, we changed our judge to a current judge in juvenile court. So the name, Probate Resource Court, was a little confusing, and we just wanted to drop the probate and go with resource court. And there are some orders in the courts that allow, that allow probate resource court or resource court to do its job, that need, the need for y'all to recognize the name change.
Okay, any board member have a question about this item? If not, you have before you a resolution approving the name change to the Henry County Resource Court, and I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Stamey. Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting authorization to accept a grant from the Judicial Council of Georgia Administrative Office of Courts for Henry County State Court, and that's exhibit number seven.
This is a grant for $15,073. It requires no match. It's just a stipend to help with their operations, and this is for the DUI misdemeanor drug court.
Does any board member have a question pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution accepting the grant, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Auletta, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting authorization to accept a grant from the Judicial Council of Georgia Administrative Office of Courts for Henry County Superior Court, and that's exhibit number eight.
This grant, it's the, it's the same. It's the administrative office of the courts. The Superior Court is in the process of creating an adult felony drug court. And so this grant is a little larger. It's an implementation grant to help, to help with the creation, and it's for $75,000.
Does any board member have a question pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution authorizing acceptance of the grant in the amount of $75,000, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. These are the easy ones. The next item is a resolution requesting authorization to use date funds to purchase equipment for the Henry County Adult Felony Drug Court, exhibit number nine.
The grant that we got from AOC will not pay for equipment, but it is paying for some salaries that would otherwise be paid for from, from date funds. And I got a quote from our IT department, and we can get all of the equipment that we need for less than $7,000. So this is just a request to, to purchase that equipment.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, you have a resolution before you approving the expenditure not to exceed $7,000 for the Henry County Adult Felony Drug Court, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The final item is a resolution requesting approval of an agreement with the Flint Judicial Circuit Public Defender's Office for fiscal year 2012, and that's exhibit number ten.
This is the contract that we do every year with the state. They provide, they provide the public defender and two assistant public defenders and office manager and a paralegal, and then we provide the additional assistant public defenders and administrative positions. But the state pays them, and then we reimburse the state. And this is just the contract setting all of that up.
And Mr. County Manager, you have looked at all of this, and this is in line with what was, we were expecting?
Yes, ma'am.
Does any board member have a question? Mr. Bowman?
I have a question. Tanya, my brother's, should I, I mean, this is a contract with the state. I wouldn't think I would have an issue voting for this.
It is a contract with the state. Your brother is the public defender for the Flint Judicial Circuit. I would advise that you just abstain from the vote, yes, sir.
Okay.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? Mr. Holder?
Kelly, the, the cost to Henry County, the county's portion of it is $893,504.93. I just think it's, it's good for the people to know that it's the public defender, even with the state funding the portion that they fund, still costs the taxpayers of Henry County almost $900,000 a year. And it's something that has to be done, and I'm not questioning that, and it's probably handled in the most economically feasible manner. But that's just, again, $900,000 that it costs to provide public defender services in Henry County.
Thank you, Mr. Holder. Anyone else with a question or comment? If not, you have before you a resolution to extend the agreement between the Flint Judicial Circuit and Henry County, and I will entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Holmes, is there a second? Second by Mr. Auletta, all in favor. Motion carries four zero one with Commissioner Bowman abstaining. Thank you. At this time, we're moving on to the minutes from the July 19th and July 28th meeting. Are there any additions to the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve those. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Madam Clerk, did anyone sign up for public comments? All right, Mr. County Manager, I believe you had some comments for public session.
Yes, I do. Good morning. Actually, there are probably more updates than there are comments, and the first is regarding a couple of issues that came up several weeks ago regarding our Board of Assessors. As you know, the Board of Assessors is a independent body from the BOC, but we do have budgetary oversight. And in that regard, some things occurred which affected our budget, which, in my mind, triggered the need for us to take some action. I think it's important that I update you and the public on what we've done internally to get control of the, what I call the travel and training budget within the Board of Assessors. First of all, that budget has been reduced to $1,000 for staff training, necessary staff training, not board training. And we have done all this, working with the board chair through our finance department, in putting these, what I call, control accountability items into place. We have removed board access to any county vehicles. We have set up quarterly meetings with the board chair and the office manager, Jan Hawkins, to review budget for and approve ahead of time any training requests. And those training requests, we have limited to, the board training requests, we've limited to the Hapeville area, where the state revenue department office is, as well as Athens, where a lot of educational training occurs. But those will be approved well in advance. Everybody will know about that, and, and there will be oversight and accountability. And granted, an appointed independent body, but one which we have budgetary oversight of, and I feel like we have made important changes in that regard.
And you've met, the board chairman has, has been having this discussion with you, and she is of the opinion that this is very workable for their board.
That is correct.
Does any board member have a question for the county manager on this item? Thank you for following up on this.
Sure. The second update, if you remember, we had a longer term than necessary review process for wrecker services in the county several months ago. The board approved two new wrecker services, one on the south side, one on the north side, to go into the rotation. There were some issues with the appointed entity on the south side, Corner Lot Towing, and they were removed and given 60 days to address their deficiencies, where they were short in the ordinance. I can tell you that they went to work immediately. We have communicated all along in the process, and they got to a point where they had completed the necessary requirements within that 60-day period. At least, they said they did. And over the last few weeks, the committee and myself have been reviewing the, the work that they have done, and I have to say, Don Ash is not here, but he and the committee systematically went over point by point in our ordinance, every requirement for a wrecker service to qualify. And submitted a very good report to the county attorney, that she's had a chance to review as well as I. And I have worked through several meetings and discussions with the owners of Corner Lot to verify that their lease and the plat that is attached to that lease meets the requirements in the ordinance. So at this time, I would ask that Corner Lot be added to the rotation for the south end of the county. In addition, I've also started the process to where I will meet with each, with representatives from each of the wrecker services next week, where we will discuss the future of the ordinance, the future of the service, and how we best, working together, can provide that. We've received a lot of comments recently that perhaps four wrecker services in the county are too many. I think it's important that we bring in the people who are directly responsible for that operation, in addition to county representatives, and, and we can address that issue and move forward where we get the service we need and it's beneficial to the private sector at the same time. So I wanted to bring you that update and ask for that action.
May I amend the agenda for this requested action item?
Does any board member have a question for Mr. Sanders before I ask for that?
As you mentioned, for the south end of the county, are the wrecker services divided into specific areas?
It is. North and south Jonesboro Road is basically the dividing line.
So by adding one, are we redistricting, if you would, the, the territory that everybody previously had? Or are they overlapping?
Well, there will be two services in the north end, and now there will be two services in the south end, south of Jonesboro Road. So it's, it will be, and it was determined in the 911 and the AOC that we could do it on a daily basis, and it's a, a daily rotation.
And the other is on pricing?
Excuse me?
On pricing. There are prices? Is there a regulate?
Pricing, there are regulations in the ordinance on maximum pricing.
Maximum. So basically, when somebody says that we may have too many, but if you have two up north and only have one in the south, then if there's a pricing up to a particular figure, you would think that the single provider would probably find it very beneficial to not worry about charging the highest prices. So to the extent there's a complaint or concern about two, it would appear to me that this is going to help the citizens, if you would.
Well, I, I think that's true, and, and that needs to be part of the discussion also. Is that, is that regulatory number too low? Does it need to be looked at what's fair? Are we, are we handicapping our, our providers? Too much regulation, too little regulation? There are other counties do it much differently from us. Right now, we have an approved list and a list of qualifications, and anyone who meets those qualifications has to go on the rotation. So it's, we're going to look at our options.
As there's two, at least, you have the possibility they may be competitive. We're not regulating price, we're just regulating the maximum they can charge.
We, we regulate the maximum they can charge.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Holder?
I'd just like to say this, that I will abstain from this vote due to the fact that Corner Lot, one of the vendors that's under consideration, leases property from my father-in-law. And if you'll recall, with recent ethics, in-laws, everyone is considered in, in that, so I will abstain from this, this vote.
Ms. County Attorney?
Appropriate recusal from you, Commissioner Holder. And I will also say that the previous motion, Mr. County Manager, adding the wrecker services, wrecker one to the list, did not specify a location within the county, north or south. It just added them. So perhaps, I think the north and south distinction is more of an internal procedural manner for us, so if you would consider asking the motion to be, just to add...
To the qualified.
To the qualified list, and then you and your E-911 director can determine how you all want to dispatch them.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I need a motion to amend the agenda to approve adding Corner Lot to the rotation now that they meet the requirements, and I will entertain a motion to that effect. Motion by Mr. Auletta, is there a second? Okay, I'm going to call for a second to the amendment to add Corner Lot to the rotation. Okay, motion dies for lack of a second. Are there any directions that the board would like to give to the county manager? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I need a motion to convene into executive, I'm sorry, Ms. County Attorney, did you have any comments for public session? I need a motion to convene into executive session for the purposes of potential pending litigation, personnel, and land acquisition. Mr. Auletta?
I'd like to question the county attorney. If we do not accept someone who is qualified, meets the qualifications, and add them to the rotation, are we subject to any reprisals or whatever else from anybody who feels that they're qualified to do such and don't give them the permission to do such?
May I provide the answer to you all in a memorandum, in a legal memorandum to each of you?
Sure. I just asked a question, that's all. Thank you.
That's a good question.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to convene into executive session? Motion by Mr. Stamey, is there a second? Second by Mr. Holmes, and all in favor? Be five zero. And let me just make this note, as we're convening into executive session afterwards, we're going to reconvene into Conference Room B for a joint meeting with the hospital authority to discuss the pending partnership between Henry Medical Center and Piedmont Healthcare. And then following that update, we will come back in here to conclude our meeting.